The agenda for the January 29, 2008 Joint Public Meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, January 24, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and will you read the first item?
Director of Planning and Director of Community Development and Housing regarding standards for condominium conversions. At 1A is council motion directing staff to maintain the current policy for condominium conversion applications adopted on December 20, 2005. At 1B is council motion directing staff to implement a new policy for condominium conversion applications. And at 1C is a council motion directing staff to explore ways to address condominium maintenance issues.
Thank you. Ms. Stotler?
Mr. Ajari and members of the council and housing authority, we bring this item back to you. You saw this last November, and at that time you were given, you gave us direction to return with information on over-density condominium conversions and our current policy and how we arrived at it. On December 20, 2005, you adopted our current policy which allows for conversions of over-density condos when a waiver is received on a case-by-case basis. And the criteria for that waiver is that the applicant would have had to been somewhere in the process of conversion and have written evidence of that on or before June 7 of 2005. So, oops, I'm ending the show already. That is a density waiver policy that is included in your packet as attachment to. Also in your packet is an extensive discussion of pros and cons for conversions. You can find that on page three of the staff report. We have issues related to code compliance for condominiums. That would actually be code compliance for all condominiums, and it especially becomes a problem with conversions when a building is over. There hasn't been adequate provisions for maintenance reserves as part of the planning for that condominium. And also the code compliance leads to similar issues such as lack of action from HOA. A lot of it is education. Boards are formed and they don't have a background on how to run an actual condominium homeowners' association. A lot of times there's phantom boards where a board exists but it doesn't take action. And in condominiums, it's the homeowners' association which really has the authority from the function of the building. We also have issues of code compliance that are listed in the staff report on page four, and also some issues related to common interest developments, not only in Glendale but also throughout California. We've listed some comments. We've talked to ECHO, which is a homeowners' association action group, and they've provided some information for you on problems that they've located in various common interest developments statewide. Those comments mirror a lot of the comments that have been raised by our Neighborhood Services Division, also in your staff report. We also have different approaches for conversions that have been identified in the report. If you want to look at doing some sort of a conversion of an over-density building, like at an affordability component, perhaps units that are over the general plan density could have some sort of a percentage of affordability. We're also looking at building attributes. You may want to have something considered such as parking if they meet a minimum parking standard. It may not be as great a concern what the density is, as long as it's adequately parked. There's some other building attributes for you to consider also in the staff report. Those are on pages five and six. And finally, there might be some criteria, or a combination of criteria for approaches to conversions. The report also lists possible criteria that you might want to consider. Among those would be performance standards. These are ones that we've addressed before at various meetings, such as requiring two spaces per unit for if you're going to have market rate units, and perhaps requiring individual utility cutoffs, maybe looking at design review for buildings that are looking at conversion that did not previously go through design review, or maybe even concerns of meeting sound attenuation for new conversions. We also look at possibility of having maintenance standards. Look at perhaps fully funding maintenance reserves to issue, to address some of the quality-of-life issues that we have arisen with some of the conversions where there have not been adequately reserves, or perhaps when there's some major improvement, a big-ticket item such as requiring new plumbing, or upgrades to a new roof, or upgrades to elevators. Those might be issues you might want to look at as for maintenance standards. Affordability standards, I mean, we want to look at some issues such as requiring a straight percentage of the units in a project to be affordable if they're over-density, and maybe all units over general plan density should have some sort of affordability requirement, perhaps requiring a sliding scale if it's a small project, maybe they don't have one, but if it's a larger project, 20 more units, you may want to have affordability. And then finally, physical attributes of a building, such as is there adequate parking? Are you looking at bedroom counts as a criteria? Maybe perhaps fire safety upgrades, perhaps requiring all new conversions to meet at least the utility requirements of a new condominium. And all those are outlined in your reports on pages seven through nine. And in conclusion, if the council directs a change to our over-density policy, staff would recommend a process based on building characteristics with an affordability requirement. And then also, because we've had these issues with maintenance that have periodically arisen, I know those are, they are quality-of-life issues. It's not just for conversions, but they tend to affect all common interest developments. You may wish to give us direction on code compliance and maintenance issues, if you so desire. So with that, we've provided three options in this staff report. We have a motion to direct staff to maintain a current, to maintain a current conversion policy, or to give us direction to look at a new policy. And we've also provided an option if you just want us to look at addressing condominium maintenance issues, independent of the whole density issue for conversions. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Ms. Rezafim?
Laura, could you explain to us what you meant by building characteristics?
Yeah, actually, let me...
I can understand affordability. What do you mean by that?
Well, for building characteristics, I actually have a slide somewhere in here. For building characteristics, looking at having minimum parking requirements, perhaps looking at bedroom counts. So for instance, you may not want to have somebody have a converting a studio. You might want to have, instead of having studio conversions, you may want to have them combine it with a one-bedroom, so you have more family option for units, larger units. You might want to look at design review. If some of the older buildings that have gone through for conversions that have converted in the past may not have been the best-designed buildings, so there may be an option if somebody is looking at doing a conversion that this might be an opportunity to have a design upgraded on the exterior. You might want to look at noise attenuation standards. One of the largest complaints that we have is that buildings meet noise attenuation with carpet, and then the first thing owners tend to do, there's a lot of them take out the carpet and they'll put in a nice hardwood floor or a tile floor, and it creates noise issues for the other tenants. And so you might want to look at requiring a minimum noise standard for each building above and beyond what the minimum is in the code. You might want to look at requiring fire safety upgrades. We have done that to a large extent, but for instance, we still don't require every unit to have sprinklering. We also might want to look at requiring drip pans, down drains, and utility cutoffs. There is a difference between when, between new condominiums and units that were built before 1994, so we may want to have a standard physical attribute for all condominiums that would be created.
Ms. Starbuck?
Yeah, going a little farther on the issue of parking and units, another way of looking at it would be looking at how far out of sync with the current standards is a development. Let's say it's a very old apartment complex. We have a gentleman who's come to council meeting complaining that virtually is little or no parking in his apartment complex. If somebody wanted to convert those, even though we may have required very, very little parking when built, is there some standard at which you wouldn't allow conversion because they are so far out of sync with the current standards? The same with sort of density of units. Is there some density and lack of parking that you say, you know what, those are units that don't lend themselves to conversion? You either combine or find other ways to park, and okay, we'll allow conversion, but they're so far off of our current standards that it would be continuing a significant impact on neighborhood to allow it to convert to condominiums for all the reasons the staff has pointed out relative to code enforcement, continuing values. Pre-existing non-conforming philosophy is meant to say some of these things eventually go out of economic usefulness, and something new will be built, something brought up the code. While conversion will probably extend that, in some cases, always you want to say, you know, unless you do meet some minimum standard, density, parking, those kinds of things, then you know you can't convert. But if you can find a way to do it, combining units, finding additional parking, then come back in and see us.
And let me just raise a question. In light of the severe change in the economics of the housing market, is there an interest in the city council to continue with this matter, or shall we just table it?
Table it. How much of hand? We all like to discuss it, I mean, it's on here.
Stayed, like to discuss here? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's continue then. I have a speaker, then we'll start discussions.
Okay, thank you. I have questions from staff, so when you're done, will you coming back?
Okay, Herbert Milano?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Ajari, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I have taken a look at this document and tried to assess how this policy is being presented to you. And I believe that this document needs to be a little bit more robust in many ways. I've, I think that some of the analysis is lacking, and I'll tell you my reasons why I believe that. I think that the city, before establishing this, looking at the details of a program like this, should have some overriding objectives that are more global with regard to the direction that the city will take. For example, if one of the major objectives that you have is an increasing home ownership, then that should be the overriding theme of many of your other policies that you create. Right now, I think that we have something like 62% rental. And the overall agreement is, is that if you increase the number of people who have, who own their own property, the condominiums or single-family homes, you have greater participation in our democracy. You've got greater participation in local neighborhood issues. You have an overall improvement with regard to their involvement in local governance. And I think if that's the overriding concept of a council to promote, then you adhere to that objective and see if the other sub-policies meet that objective. It is understood generally that individuals who own their own condominiums also get more involved in the maintenance of their own building a lot more. Yet you find issues concerning code enforcement, but we're not told how extensive the problems are. We had a similar, I'm running out of time here. Could you extend my time maybe a couple of minutes?
I'll give you one more minute, Mr. Milano.
Okay. If your issue has to do with densities, you know, are you really making any significant changes to density when you create these particular policies? And I don't believe that those are basically supported by this document. Now, with the issue of code enforcement, we had a similar problem being presented to us when we were discussing the multifamily housing issues. And in one of the meetings, I asked Mr. Engel, if we were to take the worst-case scenario of the apartments who are really in dire need, and he were to absolutely tell us what the number is, what is that number? Well, he refused to tell me until we pressured him to basically come up with a number. And the number was 60 buildings, that where you had some kind of repetitive costs with regard to lack of proper maintenance. The average number, the average owner in Glendale owns two buildings, so that's about 30 individuals. So if you were to create policy to encourage that apartment buildings or multifamily housing be maintained properly, it would require us to have, to think differently and bring those 30 individuals up to say, you need to change policy. So when numbers are being presented that says frequently condominium homeowners' association lack management expertise, well, how frequent? 80%? 60%? Are we talking about 10? You know, really, how extensive are these? And can these problems be overcome through some other means? By establishing a certain ranges of expectations with regard to how these condominium laws or bylaws are created? With regard to the issue that you have, Mr. Ajari, with regard to the housing market, well, these things are not permanent. The housing market will turn around, but if our objective is to create affordable housing, and you embed that into this issue, the issue today is affordability. So if these policies create the conditions for affordable housing, we, I think we need to create an additional 10,000 homes, and of course, we're not going to do that through construction. So it is my opinion that when you look at the obstacles that are being presented here, that if you have an overriding objective for the city to increase home ownership and to improve the ratio of owners to renters, then the other sub-policies should be able to be aligned towards that major objective. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Ms. Rezafim?
Laura. Okay. One of the main reasons I want to, Mr. Mayor, one of the reasons I want to discuss this issue today is I think we have an opportunity to come up for some good solutions at a time that there is not an urgency. We don't have 50 people standing out our doors, knocking at the door, so we don't have to make rash decisions. We can take our time, we can think about it, we can analyze it, and then come back with something. So in future, as when these things happen, we have a policy in place. We don't have to second-guess it. I want to go back through some of those items that you had in here. Do you have a percentage as far as what Mr. Starbuck was saying, as far as the density and the parking? Let's take, let's take a number. 10-unit apartment building, current code is 22 parking spaces. Density is five currently, which means five of them are out, but they do have 22 parking spaces. While it is in conformity with parking, for example, but it's out of whack on density, how do you intend to work with that? Do you have a percentage in mind? Does it have to be within 50% of the code, 20% off the whack? What do you have? Have you worked out some kind of a number that you think that's a good number?
At this time, no. We haven't proceeded with looking at any kind of change to the conversion policy. Wanted to bring, at this point, our direction has been to bring it back to you, to see if you wanted to make a change. We do have a discrepancy now between the parking that's required in the subdivision ordinance. Subdivision code requires you to have two parking spaces per unit. That's different from what our zoning code is. So if we were going to look at some sort of melding, I think what we would want to do is make sure that what we have at minimum would be what our zoning code is for parking, because that tends to be our major complaint, is a lack of parking. But if, as far as, did we bring forth numbers to you that have that? No, we've not prepared a handout that has that on there. But we can do that if you want to give us direction to do that.
Have you, have you done this with, because in our staff report, it shows that there were several hundred conversions. Do you have a matrix of that that shows how much out of whack they are from the code? That maybe you could extrapolate some kind of a percentage out of that, saying so many units were converted out of this, there was so many percentage that was out of whack. It's not consistent with current code. Because I tend to think what Jim was saying is, I would like to have some kind of a percentage. So if you're off by 20%, 30%, or whatever that percentage is, you're fine, you move forward. If you're more than that, there are ways to remedy that. One of the ways to remedy that, if you have 10 units and you have enough parking for only six, maybe you can combine two of those units and come back to that percentage that is acceptable. So you are basically making your non-conformity a little bit less, and you're increasing your parking, and also you're bringing it in more into conformity than what it is already. I mean, that's, that's the number. I like to see what, from the previous one, I mean, this is not the first time this is happening. There is some data available over the last three years, and it's a good, good chunk of data, and that will show us how far off they are. And my suggestion will be is to go there and look at it, just like we do affordable housing, and we find out that our code requires X amount of parking, and in reality, when it's occupied, we find out there's more parking sitting there vacant, and you could play a couple of soccer fields out there, you know? So we need to know what the reality is. When they converted, what is the challenge? What is the problem? Has it created a problem? The other thing that I'd like to know is, currently there is a fire safety upgrade requirements for condo conversions, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What is, you know, when it's listed in there, people think that there is none, so what is the difference? What do we require? I'd like to see what is it we require and what is it that you want in addition? So I have something to compare to, saying this is what is required under the code currently for conversions, and this is what you would like to add on. So I have an understanding of what is it that you want more of. Drip pans, down drains, you know, some of the drip pans, down drains, I mean, those are, those are, you know, some of them are easy to do, some of them are hard to do. Utility cutoffs, you know, some of those utility cutoffs are going to cost a lot of money to do. You're going into an old building that's not plumbed properly, so now you want to have cutoff, that means now you have to completely replumb for all the electric, I mean, all the plumbing, all the gas, and then on top of that, if you're going to have utility cutoffs, that means all your electric has to be done, and some do, some don't, and there is a cost that is involved. And to an extent, there would be no benefit to anyone convert anything if you increase the cost to a point that it's almost the same as building a new condo or converting it. You know what? Then artificially, we are setting criteria to basically discourage condo conversions. And I think the bigger question in my mind is, what is the goal of this council? An overall goal? Are we trying to increase home ownership? Are we trying to increase home ownership that is affordable? Or we're just going to go with status quo? Now, since I also wear a hat for housing, and Mr. Mincy knows this, because we kind of talk about affordability gap, a home ownership affordability gap is running about $300,000 per unit. That means the city has to subsidize a project $300,000 for someone to build a condo project that some very low person can go out there and buy it. How much does that play into this discussion? If there is a way to say, okay, you're off of whack by so many percentage, I think we should consider a fact, whatever that number is, not the whole project, but whatever that number is, whether it's five units, four units, three units, you take a percent of that and say, this is what I think you should include in your affordability. Now, if it turns out to be a unit, great, it's a unit that you are paying. If it's a fraction of the unit, let's say it becomes 1.25 units, you know, you have one unit, and for the 2.5 units, currently we have a standard, you pay $17 a square foot, you could pay that into affordability account. So, so this way you can actually buy down some affordability, which you don't have to pay $300,000 per unit. The private industry provides that, and you have a home ownership that is going to be much more reasonable than if it's a brand-new one, but it also will provide some low. But I need to have some, some of those numbers worked out, because I don't have any data in here. And also, I'd like to, I know Sam is here, somewhere down the line, I would like to know, what is, what is the main issues? I mean, you have listed it. I'd like to know how prevalent these problems are with the condominium associations. By the way, I used to own a condo, and I was the chair of the condominium association, the homeowners' association. I know it takes a lot of time, because it's only 12 units, but nevertheless, it takes the same amount of time. But I know some people who have condominium associations, or large condominium associations. So I'd like to know from our, from Sam, what the percentage is. Do you have a problem with a lot of them? Is this just a very small number? Or how do you go about, you know, it's easy to identify the problem. It's another thing to come up with a solution. How do you intend to solve the problem? I'd like to know that. Everybody can point out this is a problem. So those are some of my questions.
Okay, Ms. Quintero?
I would like the staff to continue to work on this issue in the housing authority and city council, because I do think it's important that we try to make it easier, if you want to use that word. We try to convert good-quality apartments into condominium units. And I think the key is good-quality apartments. There are a lot of apartment buildings in this city that I think are appropriate for conversion, and I'd like the owners to be able to do so. Now, obviously, the devil is in the, is in the details, and so I have a number, I'm going to go through the report, which does seem to make the whole situation, I think, a little more difficult than, than it really, than it really is. Also from Sam, I'm going to be interested to hear what condominium issues are currently sort of in the, in the pipeline. I wonder if it's condominiums that tend to be smaller or larger condominium projects, which ones are, is Neighborhood Services having problems with? Now, the idea of providing adequate maintenance reserves, that's true of all condominiums and paired housing and everything else. I mean, that's just the way it works. It's always been my experience. I don't know what the city could do. I could see in the beginning that we would, when a conversion takes place, that we would set a high reserve, but how do we go about monitoring those reserves through, you know, the following 25, 30, or 40, or 40 years? So that won't be particularly easy to, to sort of implement. And it'll be easy to implement, because you do it upfront, and I don't know how easy it's going to be to monitor. But I have no interest in, you know, just lesser-quality buildings coming online and reverting to condominiums. I don't think that, that's what we're trying to do here. Now, in terms of whether they should all be one-bedrooms and so forth, no, I disagree. Losses are particularly popular now, and I think a San Fernando Road and some of the possibilities in that redevelopment zone for work, live, loss, and so forth. So I don't think the bedroom count is particularly important. I do think the design rehabilitation is important. I think this is the opportunity, working with DRB, when a condo, or when an apartment building is converted to condominiums, that we go ahead and work on the, on the design. And quite frankly, some of the, I call them Soviet boxes, some of the Soviet boxes that were built in the city of Glendale that pretty much ruined central and south Glendale, this might be a great opportunity to finally get some design component going into these buildings and an upgrade in terms of the quality of the, of the construction. In terms of the parking spaces, I've said it before, nothing changes as far as the occupants. It's going to be the same number of occupants occupying these condominiums, it may even be less. So the parking, that percentage isn't a bad idea. Perhaps we can, we can work with some percentage, but if we really restrict the conversions on parking, then I think we're going to wind up with very few conversions. And then things like drip pans, down drains, et cetera, et cetera. I'm for each unit being brought up to standard in terms of fire services and whatever else needs to be done to bring them into a modern code compliance. And the fire safety, obviously, is number, is number one. I think whoever is displaced by a condominium conversion should be eligible for benefits just like they are under the Just Cause Eviction ordinance. But overall, I think it's in the best interest of the city, it's in the best interest of many of these tenants and potential first-time homeowners, or even people that are downscaling from single-family homes and so forth. I think it's in everyone's best interest to do condominiums. I think it's in everyone's best interest to do condominium conversions whenever possible. And the market is certainly going to dictate how many are going to come on, online, and I'm for trying to set up an even plain feel, and those property owners that think it makes sense, then we go ahead and let them go forward with their conversion.
Mr. Draymond.
I have a couple of comments, but one is a question that was raised by Councilmember Yusefian. He said, he mentioned about what is the council's view, or what is the current policy goal with regard to condo conversion, about policies that tend to discourage or encourage? And I'd like to, I'd like to know from my colleagues as well, because this current program, I think was 2005 when you last visited, is before my time on this council. So, let me turn the question back around. I'd like to ask Councilmember Yusefian and some of my other colleagues, I'd like to hear from them, myself. Do you think we currently have a conversion policy that discourages condo conversion?
Let Mr. Yusefian answer.
I, I think it does, but that, that wasn't what I was mentioning. What is the goal of this council? And for many years, and before I even got here, the goal was to shift the direction of rental to homeownership. Over years and years and years, we have gone more apartments, more apartments, more apartments. Many cities are 50/50. Glendale used to be 50/50. It has changed a lot. And even Mr. Weaver one time said, there is no way we're going to get to 50/50, because by numbers statistically, you're going to have to build tens of thousands of units, over 10,000 units, just to mathematically reach there. So, the only thing that we can do is to make homeownership, if that's what we really want. If we don't, we don't have any problem with the numbers, and that's okay, that's fine. But I seem to think, my opinion is, that I think our goal should be to provide more homeownership possibilities in this city. We will never get to 50/50, but we should try to get there. And to my colleague, in the past, this agency that has bought first-time homeownership, majority of them have been condo conversions. That's where we have gotten the loan, because that's all we could afford to get in there, even at the time when we're giving $40,000 or $50,000, that's what we could afford. I know some of the buildings I used to manage, that we bought units in after I was gone, by the way, not while I was there.
Well, I want to come back to my question again, and I appreciate the clarification on goals, but I think they're related, and so I want to come back to the question. Are we seeing a flood of new requests for condo conversions?
No, we're not. Since that, since the policy was adopted, we've had three conversion projects come in that were actually consistent with the general plan density. And then you've had nine requests for density waivers, but after those nine, we haven't received any in the last year.
So, then I come back to my question, which is, do we currently have a conversion policy that discourages condo conversion? Or is it just purely market issues? And that's, that's one question I have.
Answer is yes.
Because, well, that's what I asked before, but that's not what you answered before.
Answer is yes, and I'll tell you, there were several individuals who have come to me, which went to the city and to, and I want to thank the city's staff, because they were honest with the applicants. They basically told them they don't have a chance of getting this project converted, because they do not meet the criteria, period. So, they said, okay, we're going home. It's not that, I mean, it's not a floodgate, but, I mean, the staff did the right thing, which is told them what the, what the rules are, what the requirements are, and you do not meet those criteria, therefore, don't waste your time and money chasing a ghost.
And my answer to-
Less headache to us, less headache to them, and less headache to everybody else.
My answer to your question is, to the extent that staff requires those who wish to convert to comply to building standards, zoning codes, and other ordinances, that in and of itself is not being hostile to those who wish to convert. We have standards, they have to meet those standards. I'm not sure that that's being hostile towards someone who wants to.
No, and I, and I didn't mention the word hostile, actually. I, the reason I ask-
Discouraging or-
Yeah, to discourage condo conversion. If, in other words, if what we're talking, if this council and this Housing Authority is of a mind to, to encourage more condo conversions, and we see that whatever our, our parameters are, our qualifiers are, discourage more, then we're, it seems to me, we, it's a pretty simple quandary. We have to look at the, at those qualifications again. But if we, you know, if, I mean, I am all for homeownership, I don't know who wouldn't be, and I think this is an appropriate and, and really significant way to, to encourage homeownership. We all know the benefits of it, we all know the benefits of creating stakeholders and what that can do. And I am, like my colleague, Mr. Quintero, I am not so worried about parking in situations where it clearly isn't going to increase the parking impact. Of course, with some of those buildings, the parking impact is already bad enough. But if, for my own self, if we're going to say to staff, go out and, and work on new, new benchmarks to encourage, that we think will help encourage condo conversion, then I would like to see something different. I'd like to see something that, before you bring it back to us, you look at it and you say, here is at least 30 to 40% of what I'm bringing you is something that you haven't seen before, rather than just re-manipulating the same data over and over and over. And here's an example. When I first came here, I was talking about smart codes, in other words, alternative rehabilitation codes, which some cities embrace, more and more cities are embracing all over this country. Initial pilot programs were started in the state of New Jersey. The idea that there are, there is a large pool of existing housing, and in those cases, it wasn't just multiple, multiple, multiple-family units, but also could be single, too, single-family housing. That, more than likely, one of these days will get bulldozed or taken out, and you spend even more resources and natural resources as well to build a new project. Instead, they create an alternative building code. It doesn't short-change issues like public safety issues like fire and so on, but they're, they find new criteria, and that criteria is an alternative building code that, where the project is sort of adjudicated on whether it is a safe project, a safe building. And they have found that it generally saves the developer of that project between 10% to 40% on the rehab of the property, thus making the rehab of the property affordable. And so, just so you know what the statistics are, in the four pilot cities where this was tried, in the first year of the program, there was a 60% increase in affordable housing with this, with, just using this concept, over the previous year. 60% increase. And so, that is why this, this program has been adopted in, it started in, in New Jersey, but it's been adopted in Maryland, Delaware, Pennsylvania, Oregon, New Mexico, Arizona, and in some cities in California. So, I mean, it's, it's a direction to go, and if we're talking about creating incentives, I want to see something new. I don't want to, I don't want to come back and have Mr. Weaver say to me, we looked at this exact same stuff in 2005. So, I, if we're going to look at it again, and I'm going to cast a vote to drag my colleagues through this again, yes, it's new to me, but it's not necessarily new to them, to drag them through this again, I want something that's going to dazzle their eyes, and mine as well, to be more creative, think outside the box, and find out what other cities other than Burbank and Pasadena are doing. That's my two cents worth, or three cents worth.
Mr. Weaver.
Never got your vote. Questions, only Mr. Yusefian.
Oh, well, I figure, I figure you're, you're all going to jump right in and speak up.
I like to be dazzled. Razzle-dazzle.
When I got elected in 97, I looked at the statistics, and it was about 60/40 rental. I remember the time there was talk about equality, and as Mr. Yusefian said, there would have been thousands of units, of new units of conversions to make it happen, to which I thought, unrealistic, it's never going to happen. Sure, homeownership is a, one of the things that Americans as a whole want, more in life than anything, more than a car. They want that homeownership, the pride of homeownership. So, we sit in a city that has one of the densest urban populations in the United States of America. Councils in the 1980s and 1990s downzoned areas, making many areas non-conforming because it was too dense. Remember John Beach standing here like crazy and telling us that we ought to take all on-street parking off residential areas at night? Where are you going to put them? We didn't, we didn't, back in the '30s, '40s, and clear up into the '80s and '90s, we didn't build enough parking for people, and what they do have, they are using it for storage, taking it away. So, I, I can't see relaxing the standards. We went through this in '05, many, many meetings on this, and if you're going to start relaxing the standards, you're cheating the populace on the quality of life issues. When you look at the non-conforming buildings that are out there, and it says right in the report, if they're converted, you're not going to achieve the lower density. It's stuck. Some of the people that are complaining that we're too dense, they're never going to see a change. It's always going to be too dense. And if you have multiple owners in a unit in a building, how are you going to get them all agree to move out, let us tear down the building, make it less dense, give more off-street parking? Working with multiple owners will never work. And the report says about the parking congestion, neighbors delayed, delayed, maybe forever delayed. Once it's been converted, homeowners, you're going to have a mixed bag in there, and to rehabilitate the less-quality buildings that are rushed together in the '70s and '80s with multiple owners, going to be next impossible. There are a laundry list of things in here that say the negatives about it. I know within my own family, people that were in apartments with a condo association, they never knew what was going on, they couldn't get the cooperation with the condo association. It was a nightmare for them. They had to move out. So, I can't see relaxing the standards, if it was changed. If you are, guarantee you, a lot of people that are renting apartments are going to be driven out. They're going to have to go to another city, because they won't be able afford the price of a condo, even if it is retrofitted, for safety reasons, which I believe it has to be. But parking, you'll never solve that by converting. So, it's not going to get any worse. So, we're supposed to sit here and make a conscious decision to let it stay bad, and not try to improve it in the decades to come? I don't think that's right. My view, the people that will descend on City Hall to condo conversions, are people that bought apartment buildings and want to realize a quick profit by converting them to condos and then get out of town. And as I said before, I won't go there. I think we ought to table it. I'll probably lose on this one, but we went through this three years ago, and I can't see it starting all over again for no good reason.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, all this time, I've always thought you and I were moving into a condo outside somewhere.
That's going to be a new condo complex if you and I can't appear.
Now, it turns out-
Did you mean as roommates?
Not as roommates.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, not as roommates.
I wanted to clarify.
No, 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 I want to have a life.
Mr. Weaver, I can guarantee you, you have Mr. Quintero as your roommate, you're going to have a life of your time. He's a fun guy to be around, I'll tell you that.
I wouldn't know. Don't want to know, right?
Well, this has come before us several times, I don't think just, just once. I remember speaking three or four times on this through the past two and a half years. I am not against condo conversions. What I am against, however, is a subvert, what I see as a subversion of the land element of our general plan. 15, 20 years ago, the City Council, with a supermajority, decided to downzone certain parts of the city, and they had very good reasons to do that. They decided to downzone because it was too dense. They wanted to downzone because there was not adequate parking. They decided to downzone because the quality of life was at stake in those areas, on a supermajority. Now, we're deciding, or it's been proposed, that we permit non-conforming apartment buildings to be converted to ownership condos, to be relieved of the duties imposed by them under the land element of the general plan. And I am, I feel quite strongly that any change to those issues, to those, to the rules set forth in the general plan, be approved by a four-fifths vote. I don't know if the city attorney has considered that, but we are carving out an exception to the general rule on our zoning. And I'm, I feel that a four-fifths is what's going to, should be required. Aside from that, the problems that I have with this is, we are definitely going to see a loss of rental housing in the city. And what that means is, when you reduce the supply of an item, everything else being equal, the price of it is going to increase. And perhaps the number-one complaint, it's tied with traffic, but one of the top-two complaints that I hear when I'm out in the community is that the rental prices are too high. People are begging me to get them on the Section 8 list. They're begging to get in the senior housing, the affordable housing. And they tell me, and I say, well, why? They say, well, because my two-bedroom unit is costing me $1,600, $1,700. These are folks that just can't afford these rents. Now, what we're doing, instead of making it more affordable, is we are removing rental stock. The report that we have here says that the conversion of condominiums, conversion to condominiums does not have an effect on making rents more affordable, or providing more affordable housing. That's our concern. I don't want to drive people, families, out of Glendale. Sure, I'd love to have this be a Beverly Hills, but part of what makes Glendale the city that it is, is the wide range, wide range of ethnicities, wide range of socioeconomic groups, coming in hand-in-hand, meeting in downtown, we'll meet at the Americana, perhaps. But I'm concerned about driving people out. I'm all for homeownership, I'm for apple pie, hot dogs, and baseball, too. But at, at what expense? At what cost? And the cost is going to be families who are barely hanging on now, who are contributing to our city, either as employees here, their children are in school here, to be forced out, as the rents will undoubtedly increase. I guess the, the point was, when our previous councils downzoned, is that when these buildings started to see the end of their life, they would be replaced with conforming buildings, conforming in terms of density, conforming in terms of parking, in terms of electric, in terms of plumbing. This was their intent. Otherwise, why downzone? It's not just, you know, something you're going to hang on the wall on a zoning chart. The point is that eventually, these will be replaced. But if you give these buildings an extra life, a second life, as condominiums, you've, you've blown that all out for, for at least a generation or two of business lives. blown that all out for at least a generation or two of business lives. So that, that is not something that I'm really excited about. Let's see. I don't even wanna get into the circumstances where I would permit non-conforming buildings to be put forward. And there's, much of the staff report deals with that. Many of the options that you've given us involve different choices regarding affordability, et cetera. I don't even wanna go there. I just don't think it's a, it's a good idea. You know, look at the, on Central Avenue at the corner of Central and California, there's an old decrepit apartment building that is being torn down to make way for a new conforming project. This is what we need to encourage. In terms of the cost, I still think the cost of retrofitting an apartment building to meet current standards will still be vastly less than building a new condominium from the ground up. So my first question, I guess my ultimate question, penultimate question is, aren't we pulling an end around our land use element by saying that only apartment buildings that would like to convert are gonna be exempted from the current zoning? Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and the Housing Authority, there is an exception in state law for conversions as far as consistency with the land use element, so there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a violation of law to allow conversions of condominium, or conversions of apartments into condominiums that otherwise exceed the density that's in the land use element or any other, any other element of the general plan. So it is a permitted exception to the general rule that subdivisions have to be consistent with the general plan.
So how did we get involved in our initial crisis back two years ago, three years ago, when all of a sudden, we realized that these conversions were not conforming to our general plan? If there was an exception to that, why did we go through that whole exercise?
That's a, that's a fair question. There's an except, there's an exception in the state law, however, our local law, our code, requires that the, all subdivisions be consistent with the general plan, and we interpreted that to mean condominium conversions, too, 'cause those are subdivisions under the, under the law. And so the next step was to determine how the council wanted to approve waivers, 'cause the code also allows waivers of any particular code requirement that's in our subdivision ordinance. So anything that's in the subdivision ordinance, any requirement that's in our subdivision ordinance, as it applies to condominium conversions, except for a very limited number of rules, can be waived by the council. And there were really two processes this could've taken. It could've, the council could've decided to review every single waiver request, or could've decided to set a policy and have the staff sort of implement that policy. And the council chose to do the latter. And that's how we got to this process where the policy was approved, whereby it had to, the project had to be in entitlement, or the project proponent had to prove that they were in the process of getting it entitled prior to June seven, two thousand and five. And that's how we got to where we are.
Lastly, I think, should we, should we go down the road, I think we're creating an entirely unmanageable situation, where we're gonna be calling our, calling on our inspectors to go through these older buildings, to make sure that the drip pans are put in, and the drain spouts, and, and not just the physical characteristics, but also the management and funding of the homeowners' associations. Even in the best of buildings, in the newest of buildings, these homeowners' assoc- I mean, if you guys think we're bad on City Council, you should see some of these homeowners' associations, they're going crazy. And with, in the event that there are unforeseen physical defects in the building due to their age, I mean, buildings age, and there isn't proper funding, you've got the investment of umpteen homeowners at risk as they struggle to deal with these critical issues on an aging building with a dysfunctional homeowners' association board. I can use that term, I've been there. And, and where are they? They've invested a lot of money, there's physical problems. If one person drops out and, let's say, goes to foreclosure and the building has problems, I think you're possibly setting into a series of dominoes, the entire livelihood and viability of that. And that's, that's the general problem I have with, with condos. I'm, you know, I just don't have a good feeling for it. Mr. Quintero.
Well, let me be real clear in terms of the record. I support downzoning. I supported it a few years ago, and in essence, we did, when we created some of the design criteria for multifamily neighborhoods. I certainly supported it years ago, going back to the eighties, when all of these boxes were being built. So I support downzoning. I think the central district of the city, the southern portion of the city, the western region of the city, near Burbank, and finally, north Glendale, up in La Cressena, is currently, the current standards, I think, are too high. So in terms of that one particular issue, I'm not convinced that this condominium conversion is actually going to result in a, in a higher density. It continues to be whatever that building is. But I'd support a downzoning effort by the city council if we came up with some new numbers. But I just think this is worth exploring. I mean, all of these different issues, this is, I mean, you can think about old buildings that are, you know, built in the thirties, and then you can talk about buildings that were built in the eighties. I mean, we've got a lot of different options out there. And, anyway.
Mr. Starbert, I think it's pretty clear, there's at least three councilmen supporting a further inquiry into this. What exactly are you, in an effort to move this item forward, what, what would you like to hear from us? You've heard some of the issues raised. Are we gonna give it back to staff to come back with more details and more?
Mr. Mayor, let me.
Is the alternative rehab code?
Alternative rehab. Mr. Mayor, let me tell you what I jotted down, as I was thinking what your direction seems to be, just several points. One, pursue a policy that allows for conversions, generally speaking, more liberal than what we currently have, more permissive than what we currently have. Come back with some suggestions on some form of standards that would look at the, possibly the degree of inconsistency for parking and density. Look at something that might assess what Mr. Quintero called the quality, and you want the quality ones to convert, and maybe that's tied in with this issue of, of standards, of how inconsistent are they currently relative to parking and density, and maybe age and type of construction. Explore what Mr. Drayman called smart codes. As a means of possibly looking at innovative code application for rehab and conversion that could encourage developers through the use of them to reduce costs, as a result, maybe make more units affordable. If there's some way that could be done. As opposed to imposing affordable standards, look at ways for encouraging, through the use of reduction of costs of rehab, and then with that, the provision of some level of affordability of units. If developer can save costs, and that could, that could flow over into affordable units. That's what I jotted down.
Anything else to give back to staff?
I like to have the staff analyze what we, we approved, nine of these things that came back to us.
Yes.
I like to know percentage-wise, how much were they off as far as parking is concerned and as far as density is concerned? Because that was something that we did approve. I wanna know how far off we are, we were. So this way, that will give me.
That's easy.
An idea of what the percentage to keep in mind.
Do we have that information?
It does also strike me, and maybe we don't have this data and can't get this data, but I don't know that I've ever seen at least an estimate of what our current multifamily housing stock is like. I mean, how many units do we think we have out there, or developments that fall within certain ranges of inconsistency with our current code, be it parking or be it numbers of units? And I don't know if we have that, I don't know if that's something we could even get, but kinda going back to some comments, Mr. Milano, if we had some sense of what is our current population of units that are inconsistent with the current general plan and zoning standards, what does that, what does that look like? I mean, what might be, what might we face out there over the next ten or fifteen years? In a hot market, for example, you're gonna find a lot more interest in converting than certainly you will today. You could probably, you could probably blow the doors wide open relative to conversions today, and still, nobody's gonna come in and apply because there's, there's just not a market for it. Mr. Drayman, I suspect the answer to your question is yes on both counts. Yes, it's both our code, because we are very strict on conversions. You either have had some intent expressed prior to do it, or you don't get to do it at all, unless you meet current code. And it's probably good part market at the current time, so.
From the city attorney's office, I'd like to know how in the world we can work with a maintenance reserve as it pertains to condominium conversions? How could we, you know, get the reserve up to an adequate level upfront, and then how you go about making sure that they maintain reserves? And then I have some questions for Sam, if you can come to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, while he's coming up, maybe a quick thought on Mr. Quintero's question. As we were kicking this thing around, one of the previous editions of this, part of this challenge, we thought was, and it came back to, we didn't completely understand what state law requires, 'cause state law apparently does address reserves and some disclosures. We were thinking of it in the forms of disclosure. Not that we'd necessarily become the enforcement agency, but, you know, in a new condominium, you kinda know you're getting a new condo, and I understand there is some kind of an estimate that has to be given on what it's gonna take over time to replace the roof and plumbing and everything else, that, and maybe it's already provided for under state law, and we just don't know it yet, but at least some kind of an assessment to the buyers on, this is the age of the major pieces of infrastructure. Because it's not all new, maybe some of it's been replaced, but there's probably some stuff that's still pretty aged, maybe the roof, maybe electrical, maybe plumbing, at least some way to require that there be an assessment of those systems, so the people who buy them know going in. This is kind of the challenge you're gonna have in the next ten or fifteen or twenty years relative to these systems, if they're not already brand-new. So it wasn't so much wanting to get in to monitor it, but just at least have some level of disclosure, to the extent it's not already required under state law, that would say, you're gonna do a conversion of an older unit? You gotta at least have some assessment for the buyers on what's the condition of these systems and what they should be looking at in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years for replacement of those.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Mr. Engel, in your professional and expert opinion, in terms of problems with condominium projects here in the city, is it sort of by size, smaller, bigger ones? Is it by age? What's been your experience with condominiums that just aren't doing the proper maintenance and have issues, especially with the common areas? I mean, that's what I'm really curious about.
In common, councilmember, Quintero members, the city council, common areas, everything from the drywall out of the unit. So it's just about everything in the unit. And I would go back to what the mayor said. Our experiences in the well-managed condominium associations, we have minimal issues with dealing with deferred maintenance and complaints from ownership. But our experience is that those are few and far between anymore, as people have jumped into the condominium market as a means of coming in. And the mayor talked about this, and we have had experience after experience where people have made it their dream to buy their own piece of property, gotten into a condominium that they've purchased, put their last dime in, they're scraping to make their payment each month, and they're, they have landed into a sinkhole of maintenance and financial problems that they did not anticipate, either through lack of their own due diligence before they brought, bought the property, or just from being naive about what they were thinking. And I talk about that because a lot of people think they bought an apartment. And we will get complaints from condominium owners that call us, just like they did the month before they bought it, when they lived in an apartment, saying, "My sink doesn't work." Well, you no longer have a manager to call, your sink doesn't work, now's your responsibility to do that. And these are anecdotal stories, but they speak to the problem across the board when you get to condominium issues generally. I come back to the first issue that comes up with, that I started with, is it's very hard for associations to deal with significant maintenance issues. They can deal with the minor issues, I think the mayor's talked about some of the problems or issues he talked about when he talked about this. To replace an elevator that requires an assessment beyond the regular monthly maintenance, it is hard to get the majority of owners to agree to do this whenever they have no interest in it. The first four people are never gonna vote to improve an elevator, as an example. If it takes four, takes sixty percent of the people in a building to do this, and it's a two-story building, you're never gonna get it. As an example, and we have this all the time, we get complaints on this. We get complaints on making a common area improvement. Mr. Weaver's familiar with one intimately, he talked about with one of his family members, where the, and this was a conversion, it was a builder's apartment, it converted early on, twenty years ago it converted. But there was an original construction flaw in the building, that the roof drained into the front wall, and ultimately, it was draining into the building. Ultimately, for us to do enforcement on that building, it involved us going after the association. The association dissolved, rather than take, face the consequences of the legal action by our city attorney's office to make the common area improvement, to fix the roof, and now the common wall, which had separated because of the water damage. So we ended up having to go after all thirty-two owners of the building, as individual owners of the common areas to do this. And so when we talk about these maintenance issues, and it's a long answer to your question, these are the kind of things that are out there. And I wanna be clear about this, not exclusively with conversions, but we have the ability to deal somewhat, 'cause you're talking about that now, but with condominiums generally. It's a different.
So new, new construction, whatever, it's just a whole condominium?
It's the condominium issues generally.
Right. And then in terms of size, whether they're smaller, five, six units, or thirty-two, it doesn't matter?
Doesn't seem to make too much difference. The dish, the degree seems to be how well their association functions in keeping up with the maintenance. If you wanted, if you wanted my one, you asked my, that would be the one thing that it seems to be a common link.
And you don't offer counseling sessions?
Actually, Elena Bobolli was down in the city manager's office when she was in neighborhood services, she and I would frequently go out and meet with associations to get officers elected, to pull out their CCNRs, to do that, and we did this frequently. We haven't done it lately, 'cause there hasn't been issues come up, but there for a couple of years, we were out every month doing this.
Mr. Drayman, then Mr. Starbert.
Well, I, I think you actually mentioned it just at the tail end there, Sam, I wanted to jump in, because I wanted to ask you exactly that. This seems to be more a function of new construction than it does to be condominiums per se, because this city is fairly rife with condos of all different sizes, but mostly smaller ones that were built in the, or smallish ones that were built in the late eighties and early nineties, where there was construction defect issues left and right. You know, some of which are still finding their way through the court.
Right, and there's a scam that goes along with how they, and the attorneys probably know this, on how they avoid the construction defects, by how they, how they market and sell the buildings and the percentage before the association takes responsibility for ownership of the common areas. And if there's a construction defect that becomes known to the owners, they will, they will go through this, this scenario, let me put it that way, where the number of units sold before it becomes a majority responsibility of the association, there's, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but there's a time limit that allows that time to pass.
After ten years, you can't sue the developer for defects.
And, so, those are the kind of things that go on.
Mr. Starbert, then, Mr. Weaver.
Well, on that point, it just strikes me, given, given where the majority of the council is, and that is moving toward a more permissive policy on conversions, looking, the advantage you have on a conversion of existing is, unlike having to follow, necessarily follow the provisions of the subdivision, you could impose, I would imagine, as part of your ordinance for a conversion, that you have to form an HOA. And it's not, you can't dissolve it, there has to be an entity formed, so that we can go talk to a legal body about these kind of common issues. You may not be able to impose that otherwise, but I would think, in an ordinance where you're being permissive on your conversions, you could possibly build that in.
It's required.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it would be required, anyway.
Okay. And Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, on the one that Sam was talking about in my family, it was mold. And the woman and her daughter were getting very ill, and she went through a hit, because the mold wasn't confined just to hers, it was, it hit the other apartments, or the other condos. Neighbor nursed in getting involved in fixing the whole problem. She eventually sewn and got out, after it was all settled, but it was no fun. The homeowners' association just wasn't functioning.
functioning.
Mr. Starbuck, and then let's, let's move forward.
I'm, I'm just wondering how, if it's required, it can be dissolved, but I'll talk to legal and get educated later. So...
Okay. Anything else that we want to get the staff? Mr. Drayman.
Smart codes we were talking about, but also within that, one of those is, is alternative rehabilitation codes. And we already, there, we already see that around us in the city anyway, in a different area. We talk about historic preservation. It's the same kind of issue where there are alternative codes for historic.
We'll, we'll do some research on that.
Thanks.
Okay. So, do we need a motion directing staff with the?
They could see.
One of the proposed motions is to direct staff to look at the changes.
And that motion could be as, as I'd outlined, and we've amended the points that I.
Okay, as presented by Mr. Starbuck and added by.
Mr. Starbuck's.
Last comment of Mr. Drayman. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion on 1B, which is council motion directing staff to implement a new policy for condominium conversion applications. Actually, it's a combination of B and C.
It's a way to explore.
So, let, let me make a, a new motion then. A new motion will be for the council directing staff to come back to the city council with new policies for condominium conversions and addressing condominium maintenance issues.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, for council. It's its only council.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Aaron Njerian?
No.
Move to adjourn for the Housing Authority?
Second.
Second stand adjourned.
There was a motion to adjourn the Housing Authority, and there was a second.
Yes.
And for the council.
Move to adjourn for the council.
Second.
Council's adjourned.
G R A?
I move to G R A.